Closed session. On motion of Member Horack, seconded by Member McLaughlin, the Board agreed to readmit student number 2015-2016-3 to the Martinez Unified School District by the following vote of five in favor. And then, before we move on with our regular meeting, I just wanted to remind everybody that this meeting is both audio and video recorded. We also have a Spanish interpreter, so if anyone is here who may need assistance, there are devices in the back. And finally, we do have public comment cards in the back. You can fill them out with regard to public comment or any individual item and place it in the basket next to CJ, and we will call you in the order that they're received. All right, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. And John, will you lead us tonight? All right, we're at item number seven, which is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
None at this time.
All right, moving on for approval of minutes. The minutes of the regular meeting of May 9, 2016. Are there any board questions? Any public comments? All right, moving it back to the Board. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So carried. Number nine is a presentation from Martinez Music Forum to Martinez School Music Programs. And I don't see Mr. Brinkman here. Is there anyone else here? Yeah, why don't we come back to that if he comes back later? Item number 10 is correspondence. Is there any correspondence? I know Kathy, you had some correspondence.
Yeah, I put on the back credenza back there, and it's available electronically. This is a letter from the Behavioral Health Services Director about potential funding under the Mental Health Services Act for innovative programs. There's a whole format to follow. It has to introduce a new mental health practice, make a change in existing practice, or do a community-driven practice that has been successful in a non-mental health setting. So it can be broader, it can include education, you just need to have some mental health component to it. So anyone can put in an idea, and potentially, it could be funded. We will have another million dollars for this 1617 through 1920 project year, so it would be funded an year or so from now. But if you're interested, they're on the back counter, and it tells you how to submit them, et cetera.
Any other correspondence?
No.
All right. Number 11 is comments from student representative, who is clearly not with us tonight, but we do have some school reports. Rami will do that.
Quite a list here. From Los Santos, "Thank you to the Los Santos PTA for the Spring Carnival and the Silent Auction on May 13th. We had the biggest turnout ever. This is a huge fundraiser for buses and field trips for our school. It was a wonderful event with many new games and lots of help from former bull pups. Many field trips happened last week, including kindergarten visiting the Smith Family Farm, 5th graders visiting the Academy of Science, and the Hyde Street Pier in the 3rd grade went to the Chabot Science and Space Center. On Friday, 1st graders had their Little Red Hen musical. A huge thank you to Mrs. Whitlatch for another incredible year of musical greatness with our classes. This coming week, on the 26th, there's open house from 6:30 to 7:30. On the 27th, this is Friday, it's a minimum day, and will be for Los Santos, John Muir, and John Sweat Elementary." Volunteer, the Los Santos Volunteer Celebration will be held Friday at 8:30 in the morning. And on the 2nd, 5th graders are participating in a Day of Leadership Collaboration and Problem-Solving with counselors for the Olympics. And on the 3rd, 1st graders are going to the Exploratorium. John Muir, "Thank you to the PTA for amazing contributions to show the appreciations to staff during Staff Appreciation Week. They felt spoiled and much appreciated. Big Science Fair was last Friday. A special thank you to Colin Barnard for putting it all together. Check out the website for many of the highlights of the special activity. 4th graders had a great field trip to the train and old, by train to the Old Town Sacramento, and continue to explore California history. And student leadership has made hundreds of dollars this year for school donations, including yearbook scholarship and donations to the animal shelter. Bravo to our student leaders. This Thursday at 5:15 to 6:15, they have pizza dinner. 6:15 to 6:30 is dancing, and 6:30 to 7:30 will be classroom visitations. On the 1st, they have their volunteer appreciation breakfast in the morning. On the 7th, they have Field Day. The 8th, they have Talent Show. The 9th, they have 5th grade pool party. And the 10th is 5th grade promotion. Very busy coming up." John Sweat, "4th graders have been performing a successful Gold Dust or Bust musical performance. TK was able to visit the Martinez Library and the farmer's market, and the PTA had a successful movie night with a large attendance. This Thursday is open house, and theirs is from 6 to 7. 5th grade Science Fair is this Thursday from 5 to 6 in the cafeteria, so it's right before the open house. Fun Run for PE is this Wednesday, and John Sweat, Field Day is the 7th." Morello Park, "The 4th grade took to the gold fields with their drama performance by The Great Horn Spoon directed by Ken Adams. 3rd grade went on a field trip to the Lawrence Hall of Science. The talent show was a huge success thanks to parent organizer Sarah Powers and support from staff from Amy Benz. PTA Harvest of the Month was a delicious success as students enjoyed and learned about strawberries. And PTA Spellathon fundraiser was a fun event for students. Thank you to Rochelle Moje for organizing the event." I don't know if I pronounced her name correctly. On the 24th, the Flying Eagles Parent Student Book Club for 4th and 5th graders. On the 25th, a 25-cent book sale to support our library, and a multicultural potluck dinner from 5:30 to 7:00. 5:26, the 5th grade drama performance with Ken Adams presenting A Year in the Boar and Jackie Robinson. And then there's the Eagle Book Delivery on May 25th. The 27th kindergarten field trip to Fairyland, and last but not least, the Buddy Day Game Day on the 27th. The junior high, the math S-BAC tests were given last week, and 98% of students, all students, were tested, which is great. Makeups will occur over the next two weeks. The Spring Dance was last Friday, was attended by 300 students. It was a last dance of the year, and the theme was Neon Glow in the Dark. On Saturday, the PTSA held My School Color Run fundraiser. Over 100 students and parents participated in the Run Walk to help raise money for the PTSA. The ELA S-BAC test is this Tuesday and Thursday. Friday is the annual Bull Pup Pride Reward Celebration Day on the Green. Approximately 400 students will participate this year, an increase over last year. And finally, Alhambra, S-BAC testing is almost complete. Alhambra Athletics Update, track and field athletes who competed in NCS this past weekend, James Creighton, Kiara Rios, Marissa Diatri, Kyle Fitzpatrick, Paul Bromley, and Jackson We had two Alhambra swimmers compete in the state meet this past weekend, Anthony Moore and Mackenzie Dorton. Men's volleyball competed for Division II Championship this past Friday, and they won. They are now NCS Division II. Tomorrow night, they start the game at Northern California Championship tournaments and host a game at Alhambra at 6:30. Seniors and Mr. Dopey are at Disneyland as we speak. We hope they get some rest and have a safe trip back." I think that's from Tom. Wednesday, 6-1 is our senior awards night, and graduation is at 7 o'clock on Friday, June 10. Vicente Martinez, "Our seniors are finishing up their final credits and doing their senior project presentation. Vicente, 10th grade students achieved 100% participation rate on the CST science testing. Apparently, Helen has put the fear of God in everyone, and they're all testing everybody. They don't care who they are, where they are, sit down and take the test. Vicente, 11th grade students achieved 100% participation rate for the S-BAC in English. Seven students participated in eco-literacy during the school year, going to our local elementary school, teaching K-5 students about recycling and environmental issues. The students received 1,866 students over the course of the school, reached 1,866 students over the course of the year. Seven students in Mrs. Eaton attended the Wild Link backpacking trip to Yosemite during the week of May 9. Everyone had a great time, learned a lot, and came back safely." That's, I threw that one in. And on Friday, May 20, Vicente's 9th and 10th grade students attended BioBlitz at John Muir Historical Sites, where they tracked insect mammals, birds, and plant life on the site. For them, S-BAC makeup testing will continue this week, although if they've got 100%, it doesn't look like there should be too much to test. On Tuesday, May 31, from 6 to 7:30, students will be volunteering at the Veterans Event in the Martinez Public Library. Graduation will be Wednesday, June 8, at 7 o'clock at the John Muir Amphitheater. John Muir Amphitheater, not the county, so it's a new location. And then Martinez Adult Ed, "The International Fair was a grand success. Our adult ESL students presented dancing, singing, and beautiful costumes in addition to their delicious luncheon items. The summer quarter begins this week and continues through July 28." That's three four.
So the John Muir Amphitheater at John Muir Elementary?
That's what it says. I think that, is the John Muir Amphitheater the one down at the Marina? Oh, sorry, wrong.
I think it's the one down at the Marina.
Okay. I thought they were doing it at the John Muir Amphitheater, so I was surprised when they said that. So that makes sense.
I think it's called the John Muir Amphitheater.
That's at the Marina, my mistake. Good. Thank you for catching that.
All right, thank you. Number 12 is Employee Organization Reports, 12.1, Martinez Education Association.
I don't have a lot to say. I did talk with a member this weekend at length, and they just wanted to talk to me about what to do with students that can't read. And I think that in our community, the first thing a teacher does is everything that they can do, and then they start searching for whatever they've missed, some way to support students. And this particular teacher had referred students and was very frustrated that when the assessments came back, students didn't qualify. And I said to her that we need to transition from a mindset of students needing an IEP for additional support, and that every student has the right to read, and that what we need to do is we need to make that happen. And I think that if educators have conversations in this district about research substantiated interventions, about what is working at individual sites, I hear a lot about what is working at Los Santos and what is working at John Muir. And what, and we look into other programs and tactics that we can employ. I think that we can find solutions besides looking to give every student that can't read something formal. I think that we are spending a lot of money doing that, and I'd like to see our focus shifted, and I would like to see us concentrate on every student and bring a conversation to the table from those people that are doing successful things. And I know that this is a focus for next year, and I just want to say, Audrey, we're looking forward to it. We're looking forward to that focus on RTI and being able to have that conversation and look for solutions. A long time ago, we had reading specialists. They were incredibly expensive, and they were able to affect 30 to 32 students in a year. And when they went away, we wrote a reading grant. We wrote a grant for a reading lab at our school that has now affected so many students, it's countless. In fact, it was so effective for students that the children that couldn't read passed the kids that were designated gate. And so we decided, well, all students should get a little taste of that lab, and they have. And my point in telling you that story is that we need to think out of the box, and we need to be offering support and intervention to students. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we can have those conversations, bring that to the forefront, and be proactive next year. Thank you.
All right, thank you. 12.2, California School Employees Association. All right, seeing that, we'll move on to item 13, comments from the PTA. And next is item number 14, Staff Board Comments Reports, starting with 14.1, Support for Special Populations, Jessica.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Jessica Conklin, Coordinator of Ed Services, and I'm really happy to be here tonight to talk about the systems approach to the way we support our English learners in the district. I wanted to start out a little bit by, I wanted to start out by telling you a little bit about who our English learners are in the district. 375 students are English learners, and that makes up approximately 9% of our population, which is pretty stable over time. It goes up and down a little bit each year. And of those 375 students, approximately 59% of them are at the TK to 5th grade level. 84% of them are Spanish-speaking, and there are approximately 23 different languages spoken in our, by students in our district. And the reason why I say approximately is because there is a category called Other Languages, or Languages Other Than English. We have 237 students who have been designated as, re-designated as Fluent English Proficient or initially Fluent English Proficient. And when we talk later in the presentation about monitoring, our RFEP students or re-designated students are monitored for an additional four years after they have been re-designated. So we're not just continuing to, we're not just keeping track of the academics and behavior and attendance of our English learners, but also those kids who we have just said are Earlier, I said that we take a systems approach, and what I mean by that is we support the student, we support the family, and we support our school employees, our administrators, and our teachers. This year, our parent support has really ballooned, and I'm proud to say that we are continuing to offer monthly district English learner advisory committee meetings. So every month, we meet with our English learner parents, we advertise to them, we provide outreach to get them to come, so we can really keep them informed about what is happening in our district to support their students, and what's happening in our district to support them. We're required by law to cover certain topics in our D-LAC meetings. Those topics include the importance of regular school attendance, district demographics review, and input on our LCAP and our Title III budgeting. We offer parent workshops, monthly parent workshops, and I'm really excited to say that we have increased our, we, parents, we've increased our parent attendance at our monthly parent workshops because the topics we're covering are relevant to them. We help them learn how to use technology to support their students at home. We help them use, we help them to learn to use technology to access student grades through the parent portal. We teach them how to use email. We teach them how to use the translate feature in, on Google Chrome and on our websites so they can effectively communicate with school personnel. One of the proudest moments this year was when we had a group of 20 parents write then and there, bring up an email, compose an email in Spanish, translate it, and then send it to their students, teacher, or administrator. What a powerful way to connect parents with the school. Other workshop topics include A to G and graduation requirements. We have really focused this year on connecting our parents with different, with different members of our, of our schools, or of our district staff. We've connected them with Beth McVay, our district nurse. Beth McVay spent an hour with our parents, talking about the importance of immunizations, how to really decide whether a student is sick because they're sick, or, gosh, they just didn't want to get out of bed, which happens. We connected our parents with one of our district mental health professionals. We were lucky to have that support differentiated. We had a whole session on child development and a whole session on adolescent development. And boy, are those two periods of life different. Parents wanted more. All of the parent workshops and D-LAC topics were, were put in place because of parent requests from our needs survey last year. We also have spent a great deal of time this year talking to parents about social media, the different types of social media, and we've been providing them with, with tips and tricks on how to set boundaries and giving them resources on how to explore social media themselves, so they're really able to have conversations with their students. We provide open labs at two of our elementary schools. Now, when I say at two of our elementary schools, it doesn't mean that those labs are just available for parents of students at that school. At John Muir and Los Santos, parents across the district are able to come in and use the lab to practice computer skills. We have typing programs on the computer for them if they want to practice their typing. We provide them with, with mouse exercises so they can navigate with the mouse. Gosh, we, we take it for granted. We've been using the computer mouse for a long time, but a lot of our parents don't have that, that skill, and it is a definite barrier, different than being on the phone. At these computer labs, parents are able to check their students' grades. They're able to compose emails, they're able to communicate with the support of our, of our district interpreters, they're able to support and, and help translate for our parents to communicate with, with their teacher. We have parent liaison support, and again, this parent liaison support is available to all district parents, and we really try to advertise that. When I say advertise, I mean Amy and Lillian are out there beating the streets in front of schools at the elementary level. They are communicating consistently in an ongoing way with site administration to make sure that our translators, our interpreters are able to, to attend all school meetings. So important, and it's really an amazing thing that we can say that at all major school functions, we have interpreters available for families. We also, as you know, interpret at all board meetings, and we provide translation and, translation of all agendas and minutes. We also support teachers. This year, all teachers at Los Santos have been GLAD trained, and we will continue as the years go on to make sure that each new teacher is trained in the GLAD strategies. We also have three grade levels at John Muir trained. Later on my presentation, I'm going to tell you a little bit about what's going to be happening next year to continue this work. We, I conducted EL strategy sessions at staff meetings at Los Santos and Morello Park. I supported at Los Santos by conducting grade-level English language development language objective trainings at each grade level, K through 5. And we also support teachers by providing interpretation at conferences and translation of report card comments. All right. We also support site administrators. Three times a year, site administrators and I meet, and we discuss the progress of our target population, specifically English learners, students who have been re-designated as Fluent English Proficient, homeless foster youth, and students who have free and reduced lunch. At each one of these meetings, we talk about student attendance, student behavior, and student academics, and then we plan accordingly. We make sure that students aren't falling through the cracks, the cracks, by identifying need and providing direction and support when necessary. We also, the site administrators and I, meet to discuss the ELD classroom placement support. Are students placed in the correct, in the correct classes? We discuss program, a program. Are the programs using the curriculum effectively? Are they targeting student need where the student is at? We also, of course, support our students. We support, I support them by assisting their principals with program placement, making sure at the junior high and the high school level, they're receiving ELD services in an ELD class if, if they need it. At John Muir and Los Santos, we worked really hard with the principal and the intervention teacher to design a program using Imagine Learning and small group rotations so that students have that, that after-school practice, that extra practice to support their English language development. With the generous donation from Tesoro, we have been able to provide after-school club invention activities, three eight-week sessions at each one of our elementary schools across the district throughout the year. Each program is able to support about 20 students, and so we have, we have, when able, we've been, we've asked our, our English learners. For the next three years, we will also be offering club and, or camp invention, which is a one-week-long, full-school-day type of STEM camp, and I'm very excited. Last year, we were able to support 75 learners, and this year, Tesoro has increased funding, and we're able to support 100 of our English learners at the elementary level. Gosh, that's exciting. We're also able to offer Boost Camp, which is an English language development summer, summer camp. It will attach, or it will butt up against the camp invention. It will be three additional weeks of three-hour-a-day intense English language development based on language development level, not necessarily grade level. And of course, we also provide self-testing, which is mandated. We test all English learners as an initial testament, initial test, and then we test them each year following as an annual test until they have become Fluent English Proficient. In two years, the self-testing will be changing, and it will be a new style of English language development test. It will not be offered, it will not be conducted in the fall, it will be conducted in the spring after a full year of language practice, reading practice, and, and communication. Upon reflection and really just digging in deeply to what we've done this year, where we've come from last year, what, what it looks like this year, I really wanted to call out some challenges that we had. And I want to call them out because there are areas for growth. We're not stuck. They're jumping off points, and I'm really excited to be able to plan and develop and continue programs and deepen programs based on these challenges. One challenge is parent, one challenge is parent participation. We still don't have throngs of parents in our audience, and gosh, do we, do we want that? Yeah, we want parents to be informed. We want all of our parents, not just our English learner parents, not just our English speakers. We want all parents to be at all school functions so they can be informed and feel a connection with their school, with their student school. Challenges are also professional development. Gosh, we've spent the last five years, four years of our, of our professional existence transitioning to the common core, and with that comes new English language development standards. Where's the time? We have to find the time, working closely with Audrey, to find innovative ways to insert this English language development, professional development into existing structures, and then also come up with novel ways that we can, we can present to staffs. The demand on teacher time. We are mandated to provide designated ELD time for each one of our English learners every day, and math. for each one of our English learners every day and math and language arts and next-generation science standards and all those fun things that happen when you're, when you're at school. So gosh, it's, it's a lot of time. We want to also provide enrichment opportunities because for as much as we need to support our English language learners, we also need to provide them with opportunities to smile and grow and, and explore interesting, interesting things. And we also, I, I really believe that Martinez adult education is, is underutilized by our English learner parents. We have so many wonderful language development classes and technology classes that are specifically geared towards English learners that our parents can be, can take advantage of. So wow, we've got this LCAP and all of this costs money. And we have to connect all of these, these activities and these, 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 these supports to the LCAP. And really, our English language, our English learner support for teachers, parents and students fall within goal number one and goal number three. Goal number one really highlights the implementation of English language arts and English language development standards, teachers transitioning to use strategies to increase language development and college and career readiness for students. Goal three really focuses on school climate and culture, those mental, physical and emotional health components, and also, of course, the family, family engagement, family connections. So looking forward, what are we doing next year? We're continuing to plan based on parent requests, based on parent need, based on student need. We are continuing to plan based on what we, what we know we need to do from our goals in the LCAP. We will continue to support the training of GLAD at John Muir. And we will expand our GLAD training to John Swett and Morello Park in certain grade levels. I will provide English learner strategy sessions by site. Strategy sessions that I conducted this year include how to increase oral language in the classroom and how to support English learners in math. I will also, working with Audrey, we will plan on how we can incorporate the ELD standards or the English language development standards in training and support on existing district PD days. We will support parents by continuing with our monthly D-LAC meetings. And we will continue to provide outreach and participation support so we can get more parents to attend. And we're going to explore the idea of parent university and really provide these parent engagement opportunities and parent workshops to all parents in our district. I'll continue to support site administration by monitoring to our target populations on academics, behavior and attendance. And we will have focus at our administrative cabinet meetings to support English learners and how to increase parent engagement. We will continue to support students by exploring the idea of clustering at the elementary level, providing designated English language development experiences to our students in each classroom. And we're going to explore the idea of having model classrooms, classrooms where other teachers across the district can go and, and see GLAD strategies in action, see English language development strategies being employed. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any board questions? Wow, I actually wrote down a couple of questions.
Great.
Is that, okay. I, I know we did a survey last year, the need survey. Are we continuing to follow up with our parents, especially with, with D-LAC? Is there a way that we're reaching out to find out what is engaging them to come and, and what would make it easier? And how are we, how are we doing that?
Absolutely. Last year, we sent out a paper pencil copy of a need survey to our English learner families. And surprisingly, I can say, we received 100 back. That was quite, 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 quite a bit. This year, we are at our last D-LAC meeting and our last workshop meeting, we're going to be providing our survey to parents at, at that meeting. The, the, the survey will not be paper pencil. It will be more like open question and response type, type of things. Yeah, we will also include phone, phone outreach to parents by our interpreters.
And as part of that question, are you, will you find out some information about board meetings and agendas and how that's working?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We've had a couple of conversations about that.
Great. And my, my other question, it was on a couple of them. I just, so that I had a better understanding. How many, how many people are coming to the labs? Kind of, is there a target? Are there, you know, are people finding the times convenient or inconvenient? And then how are we staffing the labs?
Thank you. The labs are staffed by our, our district interpreters. The lab at John Muir is on Wednesday afternoons. And what is really great about that lab is students are able to come. So we have not, we don't have a lot of elementary students coming, but we have parents bringing their middle school and high school students. Our La Junta's lab is in the morning. And that's something that Amy and I will definitely be talking about making adjustments to because we are not getting the parents in. Before we, before we decided on times, we worked with site administration to find times that would work in between classes. And so that's kind of tricky. And then we also used anecdotal evidence from parent participation, like when did they actually come to D-LAC meetings? We tried to pick a time that was where parents most frequently came to meetings. And it, it's actually not, not proving to be successful. So we're going to have to adjust that.
And then my, my last question was what you, the challenge that you raised about enrollment at the adult, through adult education. Do you have any, do you personally have any ideas to, to get people in the door?
Yeah. So next year, we're going to take field trips. And I know that sounds so silly to, to, to say when, when it applies to adults, but what we found with our English learner adult group is that they really need to feel comfortable and they need to have a connection. And so our thought is that if we provide, and I keep looking back at Amy because Amy and Lillian and I have really made an effort to, to identify true need, not need that we might think, but need that, that, that the English learner community needs. And what we know is that they're afraid. The, the, the parents that we've spoken with are really afraid to, to step in a classroom, to step in a formalized institution and ask for help or ask for a program or ask for a class schedule or ask for a tour. And so what we've done is we've talked with Kathy Farwell and Kathy is going to allow us to come in and sit in as a group in a couple of, or a session or a couple of sessions in their different classes so parents can see that it's not as scary as formalized institution that they, they might have remembered from, from, from their past. We get a lot of comments and a lot of worries. Gosh, what if the teacher calls on me? Let's go in, let's see what happens. And that's what our students are feeling too. So it puts a little different spin on, on the way we, you know, work with our, with our families.
Great, thank you so much. Any other board questions? I'll open it up to public comment. Oh, we've got one.
I just really appreciate the way you've taken the information you've gotten from surveys, the, the anecdotal information you've gotten and you've woven it into your program because I think that's, that's really, really important. And it goes hand in hand with what you were saying that we're learning about English learners. And, you know, what we're learning about our students is probably true for most, for their parents as well. And I really appreciate you taking that consideration and working with Amy and Lillian on it.
All right, let's open it up for any public comments.
I just want to commend Jessica because this has been something that since the moment I got, you know, to here, to Martinez, that I, I recognized that we just had, it wasn't, it wasn't a focused program. You know, we were working on so many things, we're so many balls in the air. And I just see so much growth in the program in a very thoughtful and an intentional way. And I think truthfully, I, I really accredit a lot of that to the LCAP helping us create the, the lens that we needed to, to bring this work forward and certainly identifying that we just knew that we needed a person who would have enough time in their day to be able to, to really focus on this. And Jessica clearly is the right person and she's done just a tremendous job. And I just really commend you for your efforts in doing that.
All right, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to 14.2, which is Morello Park Elementary fascias and gutter issue updates. Interesting. Yeah, all right, Diane.
Oh, thank you. Back on your summer, summer project list from 2015, there was an item on the fascias and gutters at Morello Park Elementary. There, if you walk around the school, there's many places you can see that there's deteriorating wood on the fascias, which are the front, and how the gutters are leaking down. And at that time, on the list, the board did approve 160,000 to, to fix this problem. And John Navarro is going to give us a little update. But the good news is, is that we've got an idea on how to repair it and they're moving forward with it. It's taken a while to take a look at it, but we think that the cost will be closer to about $85,000 when it's all completed. And we're looking to complete it this summer. So John, you want to talk about the details? Thank you.
Thank you. When we did the evaluation of the, the gutters and the fascias, and we've had contractors and we've had roofing consultants and we got them all looked at the same issue and we even did a prototype of trying to repair it. And the biggest issue seems to be that the, the gutters were leaking and everywhere they leaked, they're like on 10-foot sections. It was staining the fascia. And in some areas, the leaks were bad enough that it caused some deterioration. So what we did is we came up with a concept of, of removing the bad locations where the gutters are and replacing the wood, but also going through and basically sealing all the gutters so that they no longer leak at the joints. We chose this method because when we started looking to how the, the building was constructed and the way that the roof layer over the gutters and layer over the building paper, that if we try to do a major removal, we would actually create more damage to the roof. So in trying to correct one problem, we were actually creating a bigger roof issue. And we figured that the roof has another roughly 20 to 25 years of life on the roof that we didn't want to, to degrade the roof structure. So the consensus with, with all the people that we've talked to that if we seal the gutters, stop the leaking, you know, get rid of the staining. So that will take care of the initial problem. The second issue was it's really a lot of cosmetic issues. So what we've done is put a separate package together to go through and completely clean all the fascias, get the loose paint off, and then makes you repaint them all. So that'll take care of a lot of the staining that was evident. So that's how we're currently bidding it right now. We had a job block last week with roofing contractors and painting contractors to take care of the two items and those bids will be coming in next week.
The, the paint, so we're just going to paint the, the top part right below the roof or?
Yeah, there is the gutter system and then behind it is a fascia, typically like a two-by-12, and it's light color. So it's a face and then the little bottom piece of that. And that's the one that's really got the staining on it. And then there's a lot of it, this is peeling off. So there's a lot of areas, the paint is gone. So that'll get repainted. So basically, all the, the fascia system will get repainted. Some of the higher roof areas, there is no gutter, but we're still painting. So basically, the white trim, whether it's a gutter or not, will be completely painted on the school.
And I, I don't want to put you on the spot if you don't know, but if you happen to know, where are we at as far as needing to paint the whole facility? Is it something we need to do in the next couple of years?
Well, well, we did just paint the portables over spring break, the nine portable classrooms in the back. And then I, about the rest of the school, do you have an idea, Mike?
Most of the school is stucco, so it's, it's a better finish. And, you know, it's not like it has that peeling issue like the wood does. So the wood, really, it's an aesthetic thing, but it also needs to be protected to keep it from deteriorating further. So getting it sealed is really, really important.
Okay, I, I just wanted to, if there's any cost savings of doing it all at once, if you've got the painters out there or if it doesn't?
I think that this is a very specific, you know, high areas. It's, it's a, it's a lot of, not very much paint, a lot of labor, basically, to do what we have to do.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other board questions? Thank, oh, let me, any public comments? All right, Diane, and thank you so much for the update.
All right, 14.3 is Measure K COC report. Diane?
So on May 5th, we had a COC meeting. And at that meeting, we did take a tour of our Vicente Briana's site because it was under construction. And Evelyn Centeno, the committee president, is going to give a report.
Thank you, Diane. Good evening, Martinez Unified School District. I'm Evelyn Aviás Centeno, thank you. And I'd like to report to you that we had a great opportunity to walk to the barren land where Vicente Briana's will be constructed. We all appreciated looking at the expanse of the land, which from the street view looks small. And then when we got there, we said, wow, this is really large enough to, you know, to, to hold that building. So we had questions on the technical aspects and the school features that will go into construction. A COC is satisfied with the answers received from Bruce Leslie. And we expressed our excitement to see the groundbreaking of the new school building, which will be almost, thank you. The yen dashler gave the membership update. Even with two recent resignations, COC membership still meets, meets the minimum required number of members. And so the district will suspend active recruitment. However, will continue to accept applications from interested people. The committee reviewed the two bids awarded and contracts approved, both for the John Swett Elementary on its HVAC and re-roofing projects totaling $1,4400. So we're happy that it's going along and that our classrooms will be having their air conditioning next year. The yen reviewed with us the status of Phase II projects dealing with John Swett Elementary, La Junta's, John Muir Elementary, Morello Park, Alhambra High, Vicente Briana's Alternative High and Martinez Junior High. And so she used this, we looked at her diagram, which is very clear and simplified. And we appreciate this. The, there's only one. The air conditioning projects came through significant technical requirement change that lowered the revised budgets by $1,582,850. And so I will ask the yen to put this to the next COC meeting for some questions regarding, we failed to discuss what the changes were. And we just want to make, well, well, I'm sure that the board, the board approved this, but we just wanted, wanted to know if the quality and projected performance of the HVAC system will really stand the test of time with the change data that was adopted. The COC review of the Measure K Bond Annual Audit was done and there was no significant questions. The yen announced that a new auditing firm, Christie White Associates, will be doing this next year. Dan Walden and I will be attending the California League of Bond Oversight Committee Annual Conference on Tuesday, May 31 in Sacramento. The theme of the conference is Getting It Right: Successful Bond Programs. State Treasurer John Chang is the keynote speaker. Final item, I brought information on, on. Final item, I brought information on school bond oversight committee operation standards. These standards are divided into three sections, legally required by education code, best practices, and local district requirements. So we just had time to go over the local district requirements, which is covered on the COC bylaws, and we compared it to the legal requirements, and they do match. Now, the second part of this review, I'd like to do this. We will be reviewing the best practices and we want to make sure that we are, you know, doing best practices. So I'll ask the N. to include this activity in the next COC agenda. And so it is important for COC to understand the full scope of responsibilities in light of another bond issue that may arise. And so we can, we and whoever will be the next committee members will be able to perform in the best interest of the district and the bond payers. And that's all. Thank you.
Are there any board questions? No, any, any public comments? Seeing none, thank you so much for your very thorough report. Thanks. All right, let's move on to 14.4, which is a facilities update. And that is also Diane.
Thank you. This is a brief Measure K update. Hello? I turned it on. I turned on the clicker. Thank you. Okay, as we've, I think everybody knows, but the owls officially fledged the nest and the palm tree was dropped last Tuesday morning, May 17. So construction has begun at a more advanced pace. And right now, they're working on a retaining wall, which is needed for the building pad. It's right behind the parking lot fence right there, a few walk by. And also, they've been working on utilities. They've been digging up around this, around the area on partially of the streets to start installing water, sewer, electrical, and gas. So the building pad and construction can proceed at full speed ahead. There are no more restrictions that we know of. It is estimated that the building, not move in, but the building will be completed in late September. And following the completion of the building, the furniture can be delivered, everything can be set up, and then we can look at relocating the Vicente Briónes to its new site. That's... And then I just, here's actually a picture of the Citizens Oversight Committee when we went out and looked at the site. Actually, it was a beautiful evening, if I recall. It was like perfect temperature. So we looked around there. And these two pictures were just taken late last week just to show you that, you know, the area is cleared and that they're moving forward. And then I also wanted, staff wanted to update you about Las Juntas. So as you recall, over spring break, we brought back and showed you two pictures of islands with decomposed granite and the landscaping crew had updated the way they looked. So what we're doing is for this summer, we've planned for the landscaping areas of the parking lot to be similar to what you saw. The only areas that won't have that are the deeper ravines where they kind of slope down and there's a bio swell, which has to have the water filtration system. But everything else can, will look really, will look like what you saw in the other pictures. And the bond team has already moved forward. They've done a walkthrough and the bids are due on June 2nd. So we'll see what we get. And we are using the California contract code informal bid process on this project. And that's our update for tonight. Other questions?
So what's the, what's the anticipated cost of that project? I mean, I know you haven't had the bids, but?
So we were hoping the budget is $70,000. However, we honestly, when we went out to bid last year at this time for a different zero scape project at Las Juntas, it came in like double over cost. But there is a little extra money left in the project beyond the $70,000 in that frontage landscaping, just the whole parking lot. So when we find out what it is, we can come back and show you what it is. And if there's any extra money left, how much we could do with that amount.
We still have a $25,000 kicker from the first QK?
Yes, we do. That they gave back, yes.
Okay, and we haven't, we didn't spend that just on the?
No, it went back in the, in this pot.
Great. Any other board questions? Any public comments? All right, great. Thank you for the update. All right, the next portion is item number 15, which is public comments. Under Government Code Section 549, 54.3, members of the public have the right to address the board on any matter within the board's jurisdiction. However, the board may not take action on any non-agenda item. Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board. 20 minutes have been allocated for this portion of the agenda. Additional time is allowed at the end of the meeting if there was not enough time to speak during public comment. And we do have one speaker for filling out a card. And Max, do you have the timer on for us? Mr. Lazavati? Lazavati? I'm sorry. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees. I'm here today because my daughter has been a special ed student in the Martinez School District for the past seven years. And I wanted to express to you some of my frustrations about the services she's received to address her disability needs. In those seven years, it's become increasingly clear to me that the district's primary interests, considering my daughter's been only offered those services that it finds expedient within the academic framework that is chosen implement for all students, regardless of whether they meet individual needs of the special ed student, which, as you know, is the law. In my case, it has repeatedly failed to ensure that important assessments regarding her disability and agreed upon instructional strategies in her IEP are shared with new teachers working with her and to assure that those strategies are implemented. Assessments for my daughter since she was in kindergarten show that she has significant issues with maintaining attention and focus as well as difficulties processing information. These are all clearly described in her assessments and IEP plans. Yet without fail, each year, a teacher expresses surprise that she has trouble focusing in class. In one case, a teacher this year suggested she medicate our child despite the fact that a comprehensive assessment by the Northern California Diagnostic Center concluded that she does not suffer from ADHD and made no such recommendation. That assessment, right here, was completed last year at my request because of my child's growing academic failures and struggles. It showed an exhaustive detail of nature of her disability and strategies needed to address it. Yet when I saw her experiencing new difficulties this year at the junior high school, I discovered that no one on the IEP team at the junior high school knew anything about its existence, let alone its contents. In elementary school, my daughter was also repeatedly punished for her disability by being forced to miss recess to complete missing work, even though assessments clearly show that she cannot complete such work at the same pace of non-disabled students. And the principal agreed this was counterproductive, yet the practice continued. Not surprisingly, my daughter this year failed to meet multiple IEP goals, is largely disengaged from school. However, the district's proposal is to adopt the exact same framework for her next year that failed so miserably this year, deny her E.S.Y. services that were granted last year, and place her in a summer math boot camp for general education students that will do nothing to address her specific math-related needs and her disability. What I would like to ask is that the school board agendas a discussion of the district's special ed program in the near future to explore these issues in greater detail. You stated in your preamble your commitment to ensuring diverse paths of success for all students. I'm sorry to say that has not been the case for my daughter. Cookie cutter solutions are not the answer for students who have significant, specific individual needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in. Is there any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we will close public comments and will not be utilizing the space at the end of the meeting. Number 16 is the consent calendar. Are there any changes to the consent calendar?
Yes, as is common this time of year, we have a few additions. The first one is under item 16.1 resignation. We are asking to add the name Emily Adolf, school psychologist, effective June 10, 2016. And under item 16.4, employment of certificated personnel for the 2016-17 school year, effective August 17, 2016, we would like to add two names. The first is Grant Matsumoto, third grade, Morello Park Elementary School, effective August 2016. The second is Point 6 FTE Behavior Counselor for Vicente Briónes, Kim Specter. I'm sorry, Amy Specter. And that will also be effective August 2016. And those are all of the additions for this consent calendar. Thank you. August 2016. I was just using August of 2016.
Are there any board questions? No, any public comments? Bring back for the board for action.
I move we approve the consent calendar as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. All right, number 17.1 is the Annual Integrated Pest Management Report. Bruce.
Good evening, everyone. In our annual report about the continuing work that we're doing with the integrated pest management program here in Martinez, I have a quick summary here of some of the activities. And at the conclusion of this report, I'll answer any questions that you have. Our two grounds, gentlemen, Juan Martinez and Jeremy DeBonavio, have continued with their annual training and updated an IPM certification. I'm still currently certified as an IPM coordinator. Mike is also certified as an IPM coordinator. And Mike took the time to do the training for the new regulation and he passed his certificate. So Mike gets an A for the day. And basically, this is the new required training for using antibacterial types of things that are now considered pesticide. It'll be, I've sent CJ and Helen the updates on that, and it's going to be required for basically all employees in the district that use those types of products. The training takes approximately one hour and there's a test that takes about five minutes at the end. And it's pretty self-explanatory. We've met with the Woodbridge Site Supervisors. I first met with Mary. And then after that, Mike has met with Mary and the Site Supervisors last week, and we're moving that forward. There was an update today from the DPR about people were getting concerned because of the July 1 deadline, thinking you had to be certified by then. But that's the date that we have to start, make sure that the training is done so that basically the staff can be trained throughout the summer or before school starts and will still be in compliance. The City of Martinez staff, since they are not required to follow the Healthy Schools Act protocols, have said that they, even though they understand the need for that, they are not going to be able to follow with us on that. So they're going to continue with the program that they have in place. We previously, I think the owl boxes have been installed now for probably six months?
Six or seven months?
Yeah, about six, seven months. And we do monitor them for occupancy. And hopefully that will continue. And maybe we get one of the fledglings to fledge across the street over here at the junior high. We've been following weed abatement. This year has been the perfect storm for weeds to grow between the early rains and then the heat and then the rain again. We've used various methods to try to take the weeds out. We experimented with some alternative, less toxic methods. Vinegar, which had minimal effectiveness. The salt solution, might add to on the salt solution that there's a concern about that because it could get into the groundwater and also could get into the creek. So we had to be very careful and that didn't work very well. So we're not going to use that. Also, through the subcommittee, some options that were asked to be looked at were using goats and chickens. We have determined that these are not cost-effective alternatives and there's other variables involved. The proposed pilot at John Sweat with the newly collaborative did not take place. And now that the newly collaborative has changed, there isn't any plan to do anything else there at that, at this time. We had the zero scape in projects at John Sweat, John Muir, and Las Juntas, and we've observed these positive effects. The fellows have mowed the front of Las Juntas a couple of times and it only takes about a month for it to regrow. So we're looking forward to this summer's re-landscaping of those areas that we can do. That's it. Yeah. Okay. That's the end. If I got any questions, I'll take those now.
Any board questions?
Just a comment that, did the city give any reason why they weren't going to?
It was more like, it's just because they don't have to and they have their own plan of what they do and they spray their cobbins and about, basically at Morello Park, where we have the play areas that are right adjacent to the school and the school uses. But they're, you know, they're just doing their weed control, like they're not spraying all over the place. They're doing like they do, weeds are on the cracks and sidewalks and things like that. And it's kind of one of those things where they understand what we're trying to do, but it doesn't fit into their particular mode of what, how they're going to control weeds.
Was it a manpower issue or just?
No, no, it's, it's their determination that they want to do their IPM program the way that they're going to do it. And they're not necessarily, they're not under the same requirements that the city, the schools are. So they weren't negative about it. It's just, it's just one of those things that they're not going to be able to accommodate us.
I guess I have, I have a couple of questions again, sorry.
No problem.
About how much, how much time do you, do you spend on the IPM this year? Because I know that was a, that was a consideration when we kind of started this program.
Well, the way it was set up, I was supposed to spend about 10% of my time. And it's hit or miss. I might go two weeks and do nothing on it and then I'll work two straight days, eight hours a day on it. So it averages out that I'm spending roughly about 10% of my time. I manage, a lot of the credit for what we get done goes to Mike and his team, you know, and that's what, that's how we get it done. They give feedback to me. I work with Juan and Jeremy to keep the record straight and to make sure that we're recording everything appropriately. And so, and then the new ideas, of course, Juan had gone to a training. He saw the owl boxes. It was his idea and you know how that worked out. We used the high school students in the wood shop and they built those. And so that was really a good thing. This year, back on some of the alternative methods, the staff with Mike agreed to use the box drag on the back of the tractor and over by John Muir, where the power lines are, they went through and dragged it all and knocked all the weeds down. And about a month later, they were three feet high again because of the fact that they, it's called regrowth. So from that standpoint, that's, we've tried some alternative things, even just using our own manpower. And it just, there's not enough time in the day.
Well, I wanted, Bobby and I sit on the subcommittee. We've met a couple of times. There's, it's a neat group. Everybody's got lots of great ideas. Thank you for listening. Thank you for trying some of them. I mean, we try to be creative to keep it healthy and keep it affordable. And I know it's a balancing act. My, my one question is, I know there's been some changes about the use of antibacterial soap, which is relatively common. And I was wondering, are we going to do, to educate staff and parents? Because a lot of times, those types of products are being used in the classroom. And I don't know if, if everybody knows that the?
Well, that's part of that training that we're speaking to earlier that went into effect. That has to do with antibacterial soaps and those types of things like that. That training will be going to all of our staff, whether it's, you know, okay, I'm old school, a teacher's aide, no, whatever you call instructional assistants, things like that in the, in the classroom, as well as all of our custodial maintenance staff. all of our custodial maintenance staff. And then anybody that actually uses cleaning cloths like with Woodbridge, I've been working with them and Mike has too, and we'll be meeting again with them to get them educated that if they're going to use those products, there's a proper way to do it. And that's what this new legislation that when those impact on July first addresses about that.
So there's a plan to get that information to our, to our staff. Okay. Cause I, you know, that's one of the things that comes home as asking for parents to, to give the antibacterial wipes for the classrooms. And you know, it's, it's about education, but I also want to make sure that we're meeting the correct standards and people are well informed.
Right. And, and just to that point, one final point is that you can use them at your house. But if you bring them into the school, we have to go through the training. It's a state law. It's the way they had made adjustments in the regulations. So, so we're going to do that.
Great. Uh, are there any public comments? All right, bringing back. Thank you for the update and thank you for the team's support on this. Uh, all right, let's move on to seventeen point two, California Property Record System Fixed Assets Contract, uh, which is presented tonight by Diane for information and possible action.
Thank you. Um, California Property Record System is a company that does a fixed inventory, fixed asset inventory. And on April twenty eighth at the board meeting, I talked about using a company called A V S, assessed valuation. And since that time, I've done some more research. I've worked with our staff, district staff who, who work with this in the technology department. And so after further research, I am bringing forward and recommending that we actually use C P R S. And they would do the same, the same thing. And they're actually $2,000 less for the complete physical audit. And then there, we were paying previously 5,000 a year for the annual update software piece and we're looking to possibly also switch that and it would be only be thirteen hundred. So we would save thirty seven, thirty seven hundred a year. But mostly this company is very organized. Um, we all liked what we heard and what we researched. So, and I'm recommending a possible action item because we'd like them to come in and start before school ends, not just the end of June, but before the teachers leave the classroom, they could, they could finish it.
And this was an, this was something that they recommend doing every other, every two years or every three, every three years?
So, um, C P R S recommends doing the full physical inventory every other year. Because that way, if you do it, the whole, the whole district at one time, things haven't been moved to different sites. So you capture a full inventory.
All right. Are there any more questions?
A couple. So since we're moving potentially going to move a site in this next fiscal year. And we're going to every other year, will that's, that move be captured somehow? So that whatever is physical at Vicente Briones makes it all the way back over here, et cetera. That's one question. Then my other question is sort of from the last meeting when we had this conversation. I know Kevin was pretty clear about what worked and what wasn't working. So has that, you said you did it in conjunction with technology and they are kind of on board with this particular group?
Yeah, I did a conference call with Kevin and Michelle West. Max, you were on vacation. But we had about a forty five minute conference call and we asked a lot of questions and they were very pleased that we were going to switch. And then I actually think it's a good thing that we do the Vicente Briones before they move because that way we have the base so we can capture anything that we missed in two years. Hopefully we wouldn't.
But my question was if we're going to move to, if we're going to do this every other year. So we'll move this year and we won't get another count on Vicente for two years?
No, that, what happens is that throughout the year when we purchase anything over $500 as well as the technology, which is less than that, but we, we, it gets inputted into a database. So that never stops, but this is just a physical confirmation that the items are there. So throughout each year, we are updating our, our databases.
Yes, since there's, it sounds like there's going to be a significant change in the furniture, for instance, at Vicente and Briones with the move. So that's all I was concerned about is making sure we had that captured as well.
All right. Any other questions? Any public comment? All right, we're going to bring it back to the board. Um, is there any interest of making this an action item? Three shakes the head. I see that. And is there a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. All right, seventeen point three, Alhambra High School, Building K, approval to award lease leaseback contract. Again, it's Diana. This is an action item.
So what, um, what staff is asking is that between now and June thirteenth, which is the next board meeting, if DSA approves increment one for building K at the high school, which we expect is very likely, then the district would like to execute the lease leaseback agreement with jail modular without waiting for the board to meet again. It would be under the delegation of authority by the district's board to provide that to the superintendent or superintendents designate. Now, on March seventh, at the board meeting, the board approved doing the lease leaseback contract for the building K. And then at the last board meeting on May ninth, the board approved an award up to five million, my five million dollars. So staff is asking for delegation of authority to award the lease leaseback contract and an amendment to jail modular for up to 5,000. Now, if we don't, pardon me, if we don't get approval before June thirteenth, or if it came like June tenth, then we would just wait and bring the lease leaseback contract to you.
Are there any more questions? No.
Not a question, just to comment. Anything that gets us moving faster, I'm in favor of.
How much, I mean, the DSA comes back and wants changes, then then, then we're not going to the lease lease. Is that correct? They have, explain to me what we're looking for the DSA if they make minor changes.
Yeah, the increment one is basically all the site work to basically get the bivouli pad going so we can do the, the disruptive work over the summer. Obviously, if they come back with some horrific changes that we're not aware of, that would throw us over the top, then we'd have to definitely bring that back. Yeah, if everything falls in with, with, with the seminal packages and what we've did the pricing based on, if everything falls, you know, based on what's been submitted as designed and what's been priced out, then we would be able to move forward. And we haven't got any indication that there would be something material different so far. DSA has started the review. They've told us that the comments are imminent. We just haven't received them yet.
My understanding, we're, what they're asking is it, it's based on a condition. So if DSA doesn't do anything, we, we are not giving our authority to do anything, but if they do, then it triggers our authority to the superintendent or designate. Right? Yeah.
Yeah, the reason it's critical, uh, and we want to follow the, the protocols is one for lease leaseback and we have to have the DSA approval, but also we're going to put in a funding application for this project, which means that you have to have DSA approval before you report.
All right. Um, so seeing no board questions, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back for an action.
I move we delegate to the superintendent and or his or her, actually it's her designate in this particular instance, the authority to let this contract up to $5 million.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? All right. Oh, that's not me. I, I didn't say no. Sorry. I was like seeing none. Right. Yes, this, all five. Yes. Sorry about that. That was confusing. So motion carried unanimously. All right. Um, moving on to, yeah, sorry. Seventeen point four, adoption of resolution number two thousand sixteen dash fourteen in the matter of classification of fund balances, another action item that is being presented by Diane.
So at the May ninth board meeting, um, this was brought forward as information, the Gatsby number fifty four, it's an annual resolution that's passed each year about our fund balances and it's being brought back for action that the board designate. The resolution that says it's resolution twenty sixteen dash fourteen.
Any board questions? Any public comment? We're bringing it back for action. I move we adopt resolution number twenty sixteen fourteen in the matter of classification of fund balances.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. A seventeen point five approval of single plans for student achievement. It's an action item and it's presented by Audrey.
Good evening. On May ninth, I presented the single plans for student achievement for all of our school sites. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise they are before you for action.
Any more questions? Uh, any public comment? Uh, bringing it back for action.
I move that we approve the single plans for student achievement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Seventeen point six, financial reporting system and services for Measure K contract with Capital Program Management, Inc. And this is presented by Diane for information.
Thank you. Uh, staff has been researching some, um, project accounting software. And I've been looking for the past few months, we've had some meetings. And staff would like to recommend that Capital Program Management, they can do some bond accounting software that includes building, they call a, a master workbook spreadsheet that has all your budgets, every, it, it breaks it down very intricately and it connects together. And this would be for the bond budgets expenditures and it links to contracts. So when you have a contract, it actually pulls directly from the contract. It's a fee service and staff is recommending that this would not exceed fourteen thousand nine hundred. And this company will all come in, also come in and train the business services department. So we will be able to use this for all like facilities, projects not related to bond and build other project budgets.
Any more questions?
I have a question. The, is the training port included within the contract and would this only be a one time amount or are there certain annual fees that are going to be required?
The training is included and this is, there's no annual fee. I looked at another company that I really like, but there's a, an expensive annual fee and they do, they do all the work. But I think this is more beneficial to us. And then if there was something else we identified that we would want it, then we could hire them and identify that need, but this is all we're looking at for now. Yeah.
All right. Uh, seeing no further questions from the board, any public comment? All right, and we'll, um, we'll bring it back to the board. When is, when do you anticipate wanting this to come back before the board?
I was hoping for June thirteenth. We're ready, we wanted to get, I wanted to get started with them before the, you know, even before the end of the school year or during the summer.
All right. So is this okay bringing you back then? All right. Okay, we'll bring it back at the next meeting and we'll move on to seventeen point seven. Uh, review resolution number two thousand sixteen dash seventeen approving amendments to the recipient eligibility criteria for the John Nunes Bulldog Fire Memorial Scholarship, which is Fund seventy three trust fund. And this is for information also Diane.
Thank you. So we've been contacted by the Nunes family and they wanted to update the resolution twenty fourteen eight, which was signed, approved by the board on February of twenty fourteen. It provides a scholarship to students who attend Alhambra and he wanted to include students that graduate from Vicente. So we've had to formally bring forward an updated amended resolution.
Any more questions?
Yeah, my only concern is, uh, would this affect this year's scholarship recipients? Do you know? It's too late. Okay. So this would not have, I, I really think it's a great idea. I'd like to see more of our, our scholarship donors incorporate the other high school in, into the possibility for scholarship recipients.
Ditto.
Any other board questions? All right. Any public comment? Bringing you back, we will probably, we'll see this on the next agenda.
Would you thank them for us, please? I think that's a really a very nice move on their part.
I, I can do that. Yeah.
All right, seventeen point eight, review and adoption of resolution number two thousand sixteen dash eighteen in the matter of ordering regular specifications of the election order. And this is Rami for information.
This is a requirement of the district and on November eighth, twenty sixteen, and it must be done no later than, for the election that will be held on November eighth. And it has to be done no later than July eighth, specifying the date and purposes of the election. And then that would give us adequate time to provide this information to the county register elections department. And this will be done, the adoption of the resolution would take place on the, at the June thirteenth meeting.
Any more questions? Seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. And since there's none, we'll bring it back for, to the board and this, we will see this on our next agenda. All right. Eighteen is gone because we didn't have any additional comments from the public. And number nineteen is comments from the superintendent, board members and future, future agenda items. Uh, John, you want to start?
Caught me. I was still thinking. I asked, I forgot what fund category is that still on the calendar? Okay, whenever. Just didn't want to forget. May's halfway over, so forty five more days left, right, everybody? Bulldogs are doing really great. Congratulations to the boys volleyball, the boys baseball, I understand. Got accepted to N C S, they're playing Wednesday. Girl softball is in. It's not a bad spring. That's it.
Great. How about Kathy?
Yeah, for the June thirteenth meeting, in addition to the C S B A delegate assembly report, I can also report on the Contra Costa County School Board Association dinner and legislative piece. And could we also include Rami? CJ or somebody, the workshop that we went to with capital advisors around facilities? And sort of make it one big happy. This is what's going on? Yeah. All right, otherwise I'm through, except for last year. I have more, I have information a little earlier on the shop for a cause thing. So if anybody at any of the sub school sites is interested, shop for a cause is Macy's thing that happens in August. You get free passes that you can sell for $5 and it gives the people who buy them 25% off. So it's a potential fundraiser for any of the schools that want to do it. And I'll be happy to bring you all the passes that you want.
Bobby?
I received notification over the weekend that one of our retirees has experienced a tragic loss of her son over the weekend. Nancy Goodmiller was a special educator in our district for quite a long time. Nancy Goodmiller was a special educator in our district for quite a long time. And her son passed away on Friday night and I'd like to adjourn the meeting in his name if we could.
I'm sorry, Bobby, what's his name? Okay. All right, Jonathan?
Just want to report back from the sixth monthly heartbeat that we're hosting in downtown Martinez. At my office, we were blessed to be able to host art from both Ms. Fairfield and Ms. Collins's classes from Alhambra. And there were scores of amazing photographs and two dimensional art from the photography classes, the digital media arts and arts one through three. It was incredibly well received. Uh, we had the highest turnout of any of the events thus far. And people were just blown away by the, the depth of creativity and, and talent and quality of the wonderful art that our students produce. So I was, I was really, really pleased to be able to host it. It's always the third Saturday from six until nine PM. Free, very family friendly.
All right, Rami?
Just a reminder that this Thursday is open house at John Muir, John Swett and La Suntis on the current list. It looks like you're, are you planning to go to the John Muir one? Okay. So, um, do you want me to arrange parking for you? Okay. Um, anybody else planning to attend, just let me know if your plans change so that we can make arrangements to secure parking. You'll be at John Swett? So the science fair is five to six and the classroom visits start from six to seven. Would you like parking?
Do you need to know for the graduations?
Do we need to be for parking? It's on the chart. Yeah. And then we arrange parking for you. Yeah. So everybody is supposed to sign up who's going to be attending the various graduations, starting with the adult school. And then it does Vicente and now the junior high and then the high school.
Sue, can you resend it to me?
Yeah, I was just going to say I, I, I'm sure they're somewhere, but.
If you get this reset, it'd be easier for me. Thank you.
All right. And, um, I just, I mean, I'm not trying to brag, but it's light outside. And I'm just saying it's light outside tonight. So.
It might be a function of.
I know part of it is, sure, it's the tilt of the world. I get it. But I mean, it is the little, little. All right. I'll, I'll take it. So I just, you know, I, I, I wanted to thank everybody for putting in all of the time that gets us here. I, not being in education, I am starting to figure out what you're saying about the days of May, which is crazy. So we are almost there. I'm really looking forward to, um, going through graduation and really celebrating with our community and our family. And I'm really excited for Jonathan to be a part of it because it's, it's really, it's really pretty special. So. I will, um, I'd like to adjourn this meeting, sending our deep condolences to Nancy Goodmiller. And we'll adjourn in memory of her son.